It is customary, we always start off with a word of prayer, and I've asked Commissioner Dorsey if he would lead us in this prayer this time.
Let us pray. Our precious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in the United States of America, greatest country on planet Earth. We thank you for the many, many women, both past, present, and future, who have fought for and defended the freedoms that we enjoy as American citizens. We ask that you be with each of the people here tonight and give us all traveling mercies once the people's business is completed. And we ask that you be with those men and women in law enforcement, fire, EMS, and all branches of emergency services, and keep them safe as they work to keep us safe. We thank you for the rain that we've recently received, it was much needed, and we come to you in closing as we get ready to start the people's businesses, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's all stand and say the pleas for the greatest country in the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you.
All right, we're called to order the Tuesday, July the 23rd, 2024 Hart County Board of Commissioners meeting. And I'd like to welcome each one here tonight, whether you're here in person or watching on the YouTube channel, Hart County Board of Commissioners, or on HTC Channel 3, our local cable company. We welcome all of you. First, we need to approve the agenda, do we have any additions?
I have a request for an addition by Mr. Daniel Hard agree for variance on a setback. We didn't, wasn't aware of it Friday when the packet went out, and he contacted me yesterday, and I said normally it's got to go out in a packet, we all have time to look at it, but he has to write to ask it be added, and that's up to this board, whether or not to do that now.
I think we would need more time to look at that, wouldn't we?
Yep. To be fair, to make a good decision, yes, we'd need to look at it. I would like to add on the agenda to extend the moratorium on solar farms.
15D.
If nobody has another objection.
We're going to 12. 12C.
That's all good. Do we need to make a motion of not adding that variance, or just no, take no action?
Take no action.
We're just not going to add it. All right, only addition we're making is 12C solar farm moratorium extension.
That's correct.
Anybody got anything else?
No, I don't know.
If not, can we get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Should move.
Say it. Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion, questions? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor, it's a 4-0 vote. Next on the agenda is approve minutes, previous meeting, are there any additions or corrections that need to be noted there?
Motion approved, 7/9/24 regular minutes.
Second. All right, we got a motion, say it, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor, this is five of a 4-0 vote, I'm sorry. Then we're going to the called meeting minutes, anybody got any additions or corrections, say it.
I make a motion, we approve the call, minute meetings.
Yes. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Bennett, any discussion or questions? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's 4-0 vote. All right, now we're going to remarks by invited guests, committees, or authorities. We don't have any.
No.
Okay, so we'll move on to reports by constitutional officers of department head, we have Mr. Shane Hicks, chief appraiser, here with the 2024 digest update. Thank you.
What I want to do is go over our quarterly report, a couple things I've added today, just thinking there at the office that you need to be aware of. The 2024 digest on our, parts of our, of the digest is completed on our part. The assessment notices will be, should be in the mail today. I got a notification from our vendors, they were mailed. So they're coming out of middle, kind of middle to south Georgia, that's where our vendor's at. So it'll go to Atlanta, and it's got to go through the sorting process there in Atlanta. So if you guys don't get one, please check with our office, but give it a few days for the mail to come in. The values are now also updated on Q Public, so anybody if they're interested in what their value is for the 2024 year is on Q Public, and it's ready available at that, at this point. My two field guys, they, they did a great job this year, they did, they went over and beyond what's really ask of them, Mr. Zach Marson Gill and Robbie Taylor. Not only did they do permitting, but they did also other field work that, that needed to be done. They're quite efficient, those two, I'd love to have two more just like them, to be honest, but they've done a real good job, and we're starting on the 25 digest now, with the permitting process and that sort of stuff. As you guys know, Mr. Brad Goss, he, he left the county, he took the chief appraiser job there in Stevens County, and we wish him well, so we're having to hire and replace at this point, an individual. All of our, all of our schedules and tables for this digest was, was approved by the Board of Assessors back on the 16th. That information, if you, you guys want to see that, that's also available, it's also available to the public if you're interested in schedules and tables, that sort of thing. I will note, the assessment notices went out today, the last day of appeal will be September 6th. That's a 45 day time period to file an appeal, if there's something in particular maybe wrong with the house, if there's something that, let's say excess depreciation, any issues, let us know. I mean, we're, we've got 18,000 parcels to look at, so we're not going to know all the ins and outs of everyone's home. Also during this 45 day time is, is the last opportunity to file for conservation use, is the ag exemption. So the people that, they, anybody that expired this past year would have got a letter, if it slipped your mind, you've got 45 days to get in for the 2024 tax bill. Let's see, all of our personal property stuff is done, it was also approved, and the assessments on those will be mailed out, was being mailed out at the same time. Ms. Chris Dickerson and Ms. Tricia Terrell, they, they've been working on the Tax Commissioners delinquent list, and they finished that up on Monday, so you may want to look for that to come to you guys pretty soon. And as far as the 24 digest is pretty much complete on our end, except, with the exception of the appeal time. Last week I completed the audit, our, we have an audit each year, you guys are aware of. I went through all the, all the sales selections that the Department of Audits had, had sent back to me, and made my notes, and, and requested quite a few be removed from our audit for multiple reasons, anywhere from personal property being included in the sale to sales between family, you know, those are just not arm link transactions. I'm still waiting on a response back from that, but I did, I did crunch the numbers on that. What I chose, or what I'm requesting to be left in that audit, come in at around a 34 ratio. Now, that is before any type of time adjustment is added. So they're taking the current, those current sales and looking back at our previous year, so that, obviously they've got to adjust it for time and inflation. So if they give us the right amount of time adjustment, we should be, should be looking a whole lot better than we were in the past two years. But there again, they kind of do what they want to at the Department of Audits, so we'll just have to see when it comes back. But with that, that's all I've got for you guys, unless you got any questions.
On your delinquent stuff, did you get the boats, does that include boat taxes and all that? I know we've had problems with that.
Yes, sir, it, it does. A lot of people, and that's, that's a good question, a lot of people forget, well, they, they go by the old saying, there's two favorite days in your life, when you buy a boat and when you sell it, you know?
And they don't pay the double tax.
Yeah, but when they sell that boat, they forget to notify us, and if you don't notify us, that bill's going to continue. So a lot of those we have to go in after a few years of sitting there racking up, racking up bills, and we have to go and hunt for that boat, and it may be in another county somewhere, and we have to write those, those off. So if, if you sell a boat, just bring us a copy of the bill of sale or something like that, that way we can close out that account. But that also, in that, it includes any type of personal property for business, personal property.
Now, isn't there a cap on that boat thing, like $5,000 or less or something?
Right, right now it's $7,500.
Seventy-five or less, you don't.
Right, now, that leads me into the bill that's coming up that everyone will vote on in November, it's House Bill 581. It's, it's going to address a few things, but it, in particular with the boats, it's raising the exemption from that $7,500 to $20,000. So if the boat is valued less than $20,000, they will not receive a tax bill. It's, it's not necessarily exempt, we still have to track it, but they will not receive a tax bill. And then there's a lot, lot other going on in 581 that still hadn't been ironed out yet by legal, so we're waiting on that.
Okay. A couple questions.
Yes, sir.
When will the new values be updated in Q Public?
They're updated now.
So, okay.
Yeah, they, they should have been updated by 2 o'clock this afternoon.
Okay. And you said that right now with the audit and the sales that you've removed and all that, we're sitting at 34%. What's your gut feel we're going to get to 38? Are we going to have to appeal again, or what's your gut feel on where we're standing?
If, if they truly use the market and not use kind of a mixture of what they feel is going on in this area, if they use our market, that we should be within that range. Anywhere between 38 and 40, that's where we want to be.
Right, we got to be at 38 to tax public utilities at 100%.
That's right, otherwise, otherwise they get the.
You get a reduction.
That's right.
Everybody else has to pay more in taxes.
That's right.
There's a little bit more clarity to that, putting it back to last year, that cost us right around $100,000 to $200,000 of revenue.
And all coming in under?
They get a break, the homeowners don't get any.
Yeah, so while the homeowners being, paying taxes at a 40% assessed ratio, these utilities are getting a break, they're raising their rates, that sort of thing, and they're getting a break on their taxes, so if it comes in, say at a 36, they get to pay at a 36% assessed value versus that 40, and to me, that's, that's not fair. It's been an issue statewide, it's not just here in Hart County, I think out of 159 counties last year, 108, 108 failed the audit, and those utility companies in those counties got a break, so.
That could be political. You just can't say that.
We just need some, we just need some good, good people out there at the Capitol lobbying, I think, as a commissioner.
Sometimes it's not the fact that the tax assessors are not doing their job, they're doing their job to the best of their ability, it's the rules are different from one entity as it is to the other entity, and some counties push the button and, and do some things which may not be legal but are questionable, and they get away with it, but we're not going to enter into any kind of action like that, because we, we don't want to be involved in court proceedings.
You've got some of your smaller counties down in South Georgia that is cheaper for them just to pay the fines and not have to fix incorrect deficiencies.
Well, a lot, a lot of those, there's not much changing, so, you know, they're, they're able to meet their, their ratios pretty easily, you know, they're, they may get 100 sales a year where we're getting 2,000 transactions a year, you know, so.
And the problem that you guys have is the sales have already happened, you're not using current data, you're using historical data, and to keep up with the current market trends, it's hard to do.
Well, it's, it's kind of like predicting the future, they'll take your current, they're taking our current sales, and then they're looking back at our previous year, and comparing those sales to, to what we, our digest from the previous year, which was set up by sales from the previous year. So there's, there's really, if you look at it, there's a, there's 24 months there that has to be made up, and a time adjustment is necessary. We argue about that time adjustment, yeah, especially here in Hart County, we're kind of a, Hart County is one of the, is the most diverse counties in the area. We've got the lake, we've got good industry, we've got farm, we've got rural farming, city, cities, that sort of thing, if you look at our surrounding counties, they're not quite as diverse as we are. And one of, and one of the appeals of the Department of Audits, they brought up Elbert County, and my argument was you can't compare us to Elbert County, we're, we're different. Yeah, they've got a lake, but we're different, values are different here, but the sales market's different, but they didn't want to hear that.
Like the information on your card, how often is it updated, it's like you, you lose a spouse or something like that?
You talking about on the property record card?
Right.
Now, we, we update that when we get the sales transactions in, or deed to gifts, or any type of deed, that's, that's what we use to update those cards. Now, some people have a, may have set, have something set up within their deed that at the passing of the husband, it immediately goes to the wife's name. If that's the case, that, they need to bring that into us, because there's not another deed filed at that point.
Yeah, there would be no way you could trace that?
No, I mean, not unless we're told.
Yeah. We appreciate the work y'all do, Shane, I, I think y'all doing a great job, and, and continue to do the best you can, I know y'all put 100% into it, and try to be as fair as you can.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Shane.
To clarify on the digest, the 45 days, the approval process, contact with that, to give y'all a timeline on our budget, because our budget ends on September 11th. That should come in about the second week, and time to get, maybe the 45 days after it gets to Karen, Karen, two favoritists back to me, it probably will be about the middle of September.
Well, Karen and I have talked about it, because, because it was a little later going out this year, we don't want the tax bills going out late, so just as soon as this 45 day period is over with, I'm going to look at the, the number of appeals, as long as it's under 3%, we can continue. Most of the time it's less than a half of 1%, is normally where our appeal, our appeals fall. So we'll be, I'll be getting with Karen just as soon as that's done, and we'll do a consolidation, that way everybody can, can set, set their mill rates, and we can get this ball rolling, have the bills out on time.
Thank you.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Very welcome.
All right, Ms. Kim, do you have something?
Just one thing, after our last meeting, we received notice that the petition had been refiled for the annexation in Royston, and so still not a lot of information in it, we'll make sure y'all get that, we've got to have our, you know, if there's an objection, I calculated that to be August 14th, but they filed it under R2 multiple family residential. So while that may be a change in density, as long as the services are all still coming from Franklin County, that's just, you know, a consideration for you guys. We'll get you a copy of that.
I just got the package yesterday.
Yes, sir.
It's by mail.
Oh, by mail?
So, our 45 days is when?
Well, I got the email on July the 10th, and forwarded that over, but we're going to count it from that email, it is August 14th.
I got the hard copy packet yesterday, I think it was, yesterday.
So we'll have one more meeting for that, right?
We'll have one more, it'll be on your next agenda, I just wanted to plant that as a pre-alignment thinking.
All right, thank you. Kenny Best, ready to report?
Just a couple things, we need to set the budget meetings, we'll need probably at least two, one for the general fund and another for the other funds, the special purpose funds. I give y'all my latest printout today, to give y'all time to study over, if you got any questions for me personally, let me know, I'll sit down with you and answer any questions you may have. But y'all rather do it in the afternoons, or the day, or night, or?
Evenings, evenings, we can spend time with it.
Why don't we set a meeting up, will August 13th be too late to set a meeting up with the, the ones that need to meet with us?
No, like I say, I just want to give you that timeline we have all, we got to the end to be sure if they nail down.
After our regular scheduled meeting?
That's up to y'all. It depends on how y'all want to do it, I probably haven't got but maybe three people at, three departments that actually may need, may want to meet with you, most everything else I have in the budget already, unless y'all want me to do something different with it, that's up to y'all, but there's a couple outstanding issues, but.
I think we at least owe the opportunity for Chris Carroll and Joseph Haley.
Everybody, everybody's been offered the opportunity to be at a budget, everybody has.
Definitely one we need to probably.
Everybody has.
But I think it would be good for them to come in and meet with us too, if that's what they want to do, but there's some other departments I definitely want to look at, and I will be going through this, because I think we need to spend a little more time on the budget this year than we have some years past.
Again, that's up to y'all, if you want to be with everybody, that's fine, fine too, whatever you want to do.
There's, there's just some things that I think we've kicked down the road, we need to address, and you and I have talked about some of them.
Now, we have, this, this don't have any capital in it, this is just MNO, not a capital.
That's fine, that's what I won't look at.
Yeah, the capital we'll discuss, that's still coming.
Yeah, this, this is MNO, that's what I won't look at.
So we're looking at on August 14th, is that what you said, Mr.?
13th, after our regular meeting.
After the meeting.
Is that good with everybody, anybody got objection?
Sounds fine to me.
It should be all right.
And if there's two, we can do them both the same night, or if there's three, we should be still.
Yeah, well, again, I'll set up the whole general funds in one night.
You know, the animal shelter, definitely we'll meet with them, you said a big budget increase.
Correct, they had a 30 something.
I mean, we were not even consulted about any expansion plans, and there's a huge budget request increase.
What percent, what percent increase do you say?
Thirty something.
It's, it's large.
Big.
But, but yeah, that, that was the one that's on my list, them, probably the Board of Elections, they had asked for a couple of things that, that I don't have in there, I had the bulk of what they wanted in there, but they've asked for something else today that I don't have in there.
Solid waste is definitely one we're going to.
Yeah, solid waste coming under the special, special purpose, that one, yes.
But the, the MNO side of it, or the labor, nevermind, the labor's on, nevermind, nevermind.
Yeah, that, that's under the 540.
Because we've got to start planning on, on expansion out there.
Well, those plans are in the beginning stage now, we have an engineering done, as we speak.
Okay.
And with, it's time, we need to set the road list y'all want me to add in for paving bids this year, so.
I'll get them out this week.
Well, how y'all want to handle, how y'all want to handle, that's what I'm asking.
We need to do it just like we've done every year, it works good, unless everybody submit a list, and then we just take a Saturday or something, get out and go ride them all at one time, and everybody sees them, and we pick, choose the worst ones.
Yeah, again, you know, we've got spacers to hold the money from the previous list we never got to, so that's, that's all we use to hold the money, and that has nothing to do with the road we actually pave, that's entirely up to y'all to make, make your mind up for the simple bid.
Just go ahead and submit that and be done with it, because we're going to change it anyway.
Which we'll say, it's changed every year.
Because the roads that were in the worst shape last year may not be in the worst shape this year.
Correct, correct, but we do have to have the, the, a name and a mileage in there on the grant paperwork to hold the money.
You got my list right?
I got it on text, if you could send it to me by email, I appreciate it.
I thought I sent it to you by email.
I can't copy and paste off my text.
I'll try again.
All right.
But we need to pick a date when we can all get out and ride and go look at these things.
Is there?
What's our deadline on that day, anyway?
Deadline.
We don't need to. You don't need to know before you put that for bid because you've got to know the exact mileage that you put it out.
Correct, correct. There's a, and well, that's not only the mileage, we'll have to know what's got to be done to the particular road, whether, whether it needs some mill in our word, just needs a top coat of what it needs. But y'all can get back with me on that and we'll, we'll publish it whenever y'all decide. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, just like to mention that uh, uh, the prayer service, uh, Sunday at 11:30 on the courthouse grounds, uh, the way I understand it, they're going to be praying for our country and our, uh, our leaders of our country and if anybody could uh, go by and support them, I know they would appreciate that. Uh, also we need, uh, if anybody's looking for a job in E911, it's available here in Hart County and uh, it's a great opportunity. If you'd like to stop by 800 Chandler Street, which is where you're at right now, uh, fill out an application. We'd love to uh, love to be able to talk to you about that uh, position. Uh, another thing, I know the kids are getting ready to go, young adults getting ready to go back to school and there may be some families that may not have the resources to buy new uh, school supplies. So I just wanted to announce about two opportunities here in Hart County that uh, will be furnishing school supplies and one of them's the Hart County Fire Department. They'll do a spray and splash back to school bash, uh, Saturday, July the 27th, and that'll go from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the old rec department. So there's an opportunity for people that may uh, need a little help in school supplies. Another one is uh, July the 28th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Flat Shores Baptist Church. They're trying to do uh, enough uh, supplies for 500 kids there and Flat Shores is where it's going to be taking place, but there's a uh, several other organizations and churches that's going to be helping with that. Hart County Gideon Camp, Flat Shores Baptist Church, Bethany Baptist Church, Manaluk Baptist Church, The Way and First Methodist. They're all teaming up together and we appreciate the Chamber of Commerce with their help that they've had in this and that. We've got businesses that's going to be involved, Strickland's Funeral Home, Milford's Excavating, uh, Wayley Construction and Land Management, HTC, Country Financial, Tina's Jewelry, uh, Dare, Chris Carroll, Shining, uh, Shin Dig Events, uh, Carroll Loan Care and uh, we go on to Cawthon's Tractor Repair, Johnson's Insurance Company, McDonald's, Gee's Southern Traditions, JL Adams and Fenner Dunlop and Mighty Ducks. So all these companies are helping out with this, so it should be a pretty big event and if, and if uh, your uh, children, if they, if you're need, in a need of school supplies, there's some opportunities where people of the county have uh, pitched in and helped and tried to meet the needs. So uh, that's all I have at this time. We'll go to District One, Commissioner Bennett.
Uh, I don't have a lot, Mr. Chairman, other than just thinking all, uh, thanking all of our departments of Hart County that just do such a great job. It's like Mr. Hicks was up here earlier, they're doing just a wonderful job since he's taken that department. And uh, all the departments are, I'd like to give a special thanks to our transfer station, which we were talking about a minute ago, those guys. I was out there yesterday afternoon at 2:00 and they'd already processed 150 tons. I don't know if y'all know about tonages out there, but that's a lot. They'd already loaded nine trucks and like I said, they had three hours left, so those people out there are really working, so we'd like to say a special thanks to those guys for working so hard for us out there and keeping up and uh, not creating the mess that we once had, just we've resolved those issues. And also I'd like to uh, take our hats off to our Little Hart County softball team, our senior league from the little league. They won state championship for us and uh, they placed third in world championship, part of the Southeastern League, uh, over the weekend up in South Bay, North Carolina. So we'd like to take our hats off of them for giving us such great representation here in Hart County. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll move to District Two, Commissioner Teasley.
I too like Commissioner Bennett, appreciate all our county employees, our public service, public service workers and appreciate all of them, our first responders. Um, also, uh, been seeing the inmate detail working around uh, Hart County some and uh, appreciate the warden out there working with us and helping us get that started back up and I hope that we can um, get some of them other details uh, somewhere down the line, but uh, appreciate them working with us and glad to see them out working in our community and picking the roads up. That's all I got.
All right, Commissioner Brown's out of town tonight, so we'll move to District Five, Commissioner Dorsey.
Yeah, I want to send a big shout out to Brian Fleming and the Hart County Farm Bureau for the ag meeting that took place. It was a very good informative update. I think all, most of us were there. I know y'all were out. Michael, you were gone, right?
Yeah, I was out.
Yeah. Um, so it was, it was a very informative meeting, um, bringing us up to date on some legislative things that were going on. So kudos to those guys for uh, getting everybody together and, and having some good communication. And that leads me into my second thing, communication. Um, I know y'all run into this, I run into it. I had a situation yesterday where I was trying to get in touch with somebody, couldn't find them. Um, but you, we used to have a um, calendar when somebody was going to be out that everybody would have access to. Google Docs would do this for us, there's other options, but I would like to see us get something and like a Google Docs, it's a shared document where people's schedules are out there, including ours, if you're not available or if you're available. Um, I had a road situation yesterday. Shannon was on vacation. I called multiple times, never could get in touch with him, finally got Terrell to find, and you know, he wasn't here. Um, but y'all run into that too, when you try to call people and you can't get them. We, it just helps streamline communication and I think that's something that we need to do. And I've asked Terrell to look at that. Uh, it's just like if we're going to have a call meeting, if we've got our calendars up to date, uh, it should be just as simple as seeing who's available, who's not. And uh, not only us, but the department heads and the county administrator as well. So that way we all can see each other's schedule. If we need to get in touch with somebody, you know if they're there, whatever the case may be. So I just want to throw that out and I've asked him to look at that and he's, hopefully will have us something the next couple of weeks. Um, next thing I wanted to, to mention briefly is uh, we had a, a meeting with the city and uh, I'm very disappointed in our local newspaper, uh, the Hartwell Sun, called Spade to Spade. The lead story, T-Spots vote delayed until November 2025. The Board of Commissioners is the only one that can call for that T-Spots vote. The Board of Commissioners didn't even take a vote in that meeting. So it's very misleading. Um, and I just want people to know, there's been no vote taken by this board to set a date for a T-Spots referendum. But if you read that by, that headline or you walk by that newspaper rack or you see it, it kind of leads you to believe that. And if they want to do the right thing, they need to do a retraction or correction. Uh, but I just wanted to throw that out because I've had people ask me about it this week. Um, you guys, I think all agree that we didn't vote on anything that was there. There was no vote by any of the, the county commissioners. But I just wanted to clarify that because I have had people question me about it and that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to uh, old business, uh, the solar ordinance, uh, second reading. Uh, is there any, anything, any changes?
Well, you know, today we got an email from Ms. Kim, you know, from the Department of Natural Resources about solar farms and that might be something we want to, you know, table or something maybe to the next meeting, I don't know.
I found a joint project dated September 2023 between Georgia Department of Natural Resources and the EPD and it's called Recommended Practices for the Responsible Siting and Design of Solar Development in Georgia. A lot of it, I don't know if it's really going to apply to us, but I haven't had time to fully digest it yet and we may just want to incorporate that as a whole, but I wanted you all to see it first.
Let's just skip over this for tonight as being the second reading and uh, till we can get more familiar with that.
The other thing that I-
Listen, I was going to do-
I agree.
That I had asked Terrell for, if he can locate um, at some point in the coming week maybe, are the locations of the substations? I'd, I'd just like to know where those were.
What's that mean?
All the substations.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, look at those on the tax map, look at the surrounding areas. I mean, you know, we don't want to be arbitrary with, with what we're doing or overreaching. Um, so we kind of need to know where those are and.
You can, I've got a list of, you can call EMC and they'll give you their list.
Both of them are EMC. Both of them are EMC.
EMC's transferred out, is it Georgia Transmission, GTC?
Right.
And then I'm not sure that Georgia Power doesn't have some too.
Yeah, I mean, they, they'd be multiple, even what's the one that furnishes Green now there, about India, but.
Oh, that's our Walton EMC.
Well, EMC, we've got eight, I don't know how many the rest of them we got, I don't know, we got eight.
I, I did email the EMC today, so hopefully we'll get some.
Let's just not take any action tonight to get that information and let Kim have time to get familiar with that uh, that uh, study with DNR. Did everybody, any objection to that? Uh, we'll just move on. All right, let's go on to uh, recreational vehicle, mobile home park ordinance.
I have been working on that for you guys. I do have a minor draft going. Um, if you all remember, our old section 50 dash 33 is one page. And so I highlighted some things. Um, I heard maybe from some of you that you might want to change. I think we'll have to give you a minute.
I got it. Yeah. Let me have one. Highlighting. Well, it's gray highlighting. Run out of it.
So there was just some areas there for you all to think about, um, what that minimum square feet on the site space would be and I, I had heard that maybe we didn't want to do 25 acres. Maybe that needed to be 20.
I think 20 is a gracious point.
I agree with Terrell myself. I thought 25 a little much. That was just the first thing that got thrown out there. And we did get it down to four per acre, right?
So we don't change the 25 to 20?
Is that consensus?
That's my thoughts.
I'm following it.
Um, the other thing that I thought about on the setbacks, number three, this RV vehicle parks is inside of the manufactured housing ordinance and those setbacks, do y'all want those to be different?
I think they have to be.
Okay. You think that the RV park is just different enough that it needs to be different?
This is our own animal.
So I added a few more things that you all had not um, mentioned before that I just kept finding in other uh, ordinances, such as I highlighted for you all the, the water system supply. I think it would be miserable to not have enough pressure out there and I'm not sure that that's something that uh, the Health Department regulates.
On the RV park, unless we've got nine or more sites, or the Health Department of EPD does.
Okay.
The 10th of the, of the EPD.
But does the EPD, yeah, that's true. Does the EPD regulate pressure?
No.
Yeah, 20 PSI is pretty low.
Very low.
It needs at least 30.
I also thought about hydrants. How, how are we going to put out a fire out there?
Can you call us anything?
I don't know that a well could run a fire hydrant, but I just thought, if they're going to hook into county water then-
You're going to have a six inch line to even have a fire hydrant.
If they're going to hook into county water.
So you might have a municipal water source, that's good.
There's some 2-inch fire hydrants up in New York shores, I don't know who put that mess up there. Oh, they're not there anymore, of course. They're still there, but the, the new system's in.
And then the um, a made for an entry and an exit.
Mm-hmm.
And then in the event there's additional internal roads, I, I don't have a turnaround there. Do y'all want that the same turnaround as a subdivision cul-de-sac or is what we have there just sufficient enough? So those are just thoughts for you all. I highlighted those, I'm sorry it's at the end of the day today. I don't expect answers from you tonight, I just.
If it's a single road, it should have the same as a subdivision, shouldn't it?
Well, it's going to, it could be different because it's going to depend on how long the camper is, it's going to depend on how long the truck is.
What about the fire truck?
Same thing, or motor homes.
The way out of the, of the port.
Right. That's going.
You get these 40 foot campers behind a 20 foot truck, you're 60 feet long.
But you look at our subdivision ordinance, I think we got a 90 foot radius, we talked about that.
Mm-hmm.
So that would probably be sufficient, but.
So maybe we need a site plan that would have that in advance?
I think you got to have it.
I would think they would have a site plan if they're going to do one, so I think we should require one.
Yeah, that's, that's already in the original, we have a site.
Okay. It's in, inside of the manufactured housing part.
And you can approve it if you want to.
Let's, let's take these things home and let's look at it and come back at the next meeting, since you've got some changes and give us an offer to look at it.
So we've referenced the site plan, but we really don't say what it has to have, so maybe I can just tighten that up a little bit. I mean, the very first line says can't be-
Site plan must be approved.
Can't be developed or expanded without an approved site plan, so maybe we just need to tell them what we want a little bit better on the site plan.
See, the Health Department has to have a site plan to approve their part of it.
Right.
The guards.
Because that's going to determine the number.
The Health Department approves it. That's maybe what the requirement to decide.
Is the Health Department approving the sewer, I mean, the septic?
They approve, they, they have a whole site plan that approves the septic.
Okay. That's, that's all they're doing, is the septic, if it's more than nine of the guts.
We'll take it separate next meeting.
They approve the septic, it goes to, it goes to the day, then that goes to state.
Okay.
But again, there is a site plan, I'm not sure that we didn't there, we require it, but we do have it.
Okay.
We all in agreement with the 20 acres instead of 25, so we can go ahead and mark that in, but like I said, we'll carry that on and look, look over the other changes she's made in there and we'll get back on it next week, next meeting. All right, if there's nobody objecting, hang on, we're, okay. All right, uh, we'll move on to uh, 12C, this uh, solar farm moratorium. Uh, if we're going to extend the moratorium, we need to have a motion to extend it.
I'll make a motion to extend the solar farm moratorium for 90 days.
Well, last time it was six months, or we can say until we get done with the ordinance.
Well, I'm in my motion to extend the solar farm extension moratorium until the ordinance is completed.
We, we probably need to put a time on it.
I was thinking, I mean, we'll be done in 90 days.
Well, I don't, don't know if you will.
I'd say in six months, or when we finish the ordinance. If we get finished with the ordinance in a month, we, we're, we're done with it.
So let's look at what all is on our plates right now.
I agree.
Budget. You got call meetings for uh, IBA interviews.
The 13th is left.
You got, you've got, um, oh God, this, you got these other ordinances that we already have out there. So I mean, there's a lot of things going on that's going to take time. You know, I think just do it six months and then you get it done and you lift it or you do it 120 days, three months, that gives you time because you look at where we're at now, July and August, we got to get the budget done, that's got to be part of it.
I said the place loaded for 13. I'm in my motion to extend this moratorium for 180 days.
But he's going to keep it.
Until it's completed.
For six months or completed.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I think you need to lift the moratorium after it's completed. That way there's a cut and it's a vote and it's not just-
We can do that after it's completed, yeah.
Because somebody may say, because at the end of the day, we got to, we got to put Somebody may say, because at the end of the day, we got to, we got to put a, take a vote as to when it's going to take effect. And that will kill the moratorium. That does.
Well, I did. I said six months, right. 180 days or till it's completed is what I said.
But you still will have to take another vote to implement the date when it's going to take effect. You may have the ordinance done September 15th, but you want it to take effect October 1st. So, that's what I'm saying. I mean, when it's done doesn't necessarily mean it's when you're going to lift it. When you're going to, when you're going to start enforcing that-
I seen his motion that we're going to lift it when it's done.
Yeah, we'll lift it when it's done.
How about when it goes into effect? That's what we need to, that's what we need to say. But I'm just saying, what I'm trying to say was you could be done with it, say, September 27th, 28th, but you want it to take effect in October 1st because you want a cutoff date to start it. That's all I was saying, so.
So, you want me to amend it and put a cutoff?
No, deal with what you got, because we're going to have to vote at the end of the thing.
At the end of it anyway.
For an effective date.
That's right. So, we got a motion by Commissioner Bennett. We got a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's a four-o vote. All right. New business. Voting delegate for ACCG legislative meeting. And I've asked Commissioner Brown, he is going to that, some classes there, and he has agreed to be the voting delegate.
I make a motion, we appoint Commissioner Brown to be the voting delegate for the Hart County BOC.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. We'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's a four-o vote. Had a teaching for missing a meeting.
That's why I started to say that, but it never worked.
All right. We'll move on to tax refund for Paradise Point parcel.
Basically, I have a paper there in front of me, but this was something that was found noticed for whatever reason this last week or two. This parcel is community property, it wasn't supposed to be taxed and wasn't supposed to have been sent a tax bill. And it hadn't been since the 21 tax year, which would have been 22. But they paid it that year, so they're requesting a refund of $2,601.83. And it has been signed off on by the Board of, Board of Sessors and the Tax Commissioner.
Any master requirements?
Correct.
Yeah, all the research. Everybody signed off. I make the motion.
I've got a question here. So, this is a 2021.
Yep.
2021 tax year, which would have been 2022 budget year.
So, we're still within a three-year, so we're good now.
Correct. Yeah, I checked it.
I'll give you a second on that. All right. Commissioner Bennett made a motion for a refund. Commissioner Teasley gave a second. Any other questions or discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's a four-o vote. Then we'll move on to Newburgh intersection discussion. Commissioner Dorsey asked this to be put on the agenda, so I'll give him the floor at this time.
So, we all know that this intersection is a problem area. This splits District 1 and District 5. I had been having some conversations with Jason Dykes at GDOT in regard to some road issues in Hart County. And the conversation come up about this intersection, and I know there's been a lot of talk. But the conversation focused on possibility of putting a four-way stop at this intersection. Similar to what we had GDOT do at Clay Brown Bio Church Road 172. GDOT then come back and said, we want to put a roundabout there, and we said, no, we don't want to put a roundabout there because that went from one of the biggest crash areas since that four-way stop has been put there. I'm not aware of a single crash. It's been over two years since it's been there. Jason said GDOT didn't have a problem in his role as, at GDOT, and he's our district engineer. He had no problem looking at a four-way stop. However, he wanted to condition that with several things. First of all, they're going to have to do a traffic study. They're willing to do that, but they didn't want a letter from this board asking them to consider doing that. They wouldn't do this until school started back, so school starts back this coming Thursday, I think. And even if we send a letter today, there's no promises that this is going to happen. I will make sure that we're totally transparent on that. However, they are willing to look at it. Something does need to be done. There's been some accidents. And the last accident that took place, by my understanding, had nothing to do with the intersection. Right, so I mean, there's, a lot of people have got that confused. I just want to make sure that's clear. But I'm just going to put a motion that we have our county administrator write a letter to Jason Dykes at GDOT and have Chairman sign it on behalf of the board, and this vote will authorize him to sign that. To ask him to look at the possibility of implementing a four-way stop at that intersection. Obviously, there's site distance situations and a lot of variables that have to be looked at. So, this is just to try to get the ball rolling, to get something done there. And Alan Powell's been involved in this. I ran into him. I told him I'd already talked to Jason and that it was going to be on the agenda. So, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Before we do that, I'd like to thank Commissioner Dorsey for putting this on the agenda. I've made a lot of calls with this for the last two years. Haven't gotten much attention. And as well, I've spoke with Alan Powell. I actually spoke with him right after that last wreck there that wasn't even in the intersection. But this, due to the speed down there, it's just, it's bad. I think there's been six deaths there over the years.
More than that. I've been around a long time. It took six fatalities to get the caution lights.
Yeah, I've lived on that corner for 18 years, and I saw more than, I just got to thinking one day, I've saw more than 100 of those wrecks in front of my house.
From the 70s, I can't remember what year the caution light went up.
I've kept people in my house for half a day at a time till their other family could come and get them off the roads because their cars were towed away. I've never saw one out there that went to a body shop. They were all towed. It is one of the worst. I think probably EMS visits that intersection more than they do anywhere. But like I said, and Mr. Powell is beaten with the DOT on the 30th, he told me.
And Jesse Thurman, our maintenance guy-
His new guy sitting in Carnville. I didn't know him. Said you knew him personally, and I said, well, maybe that's a plus for us that Mr. Dorsey knows him. I said, maybe that'll help us out. So, anyway, thank you again, Mr. Dorsey for putting this on the agenda.
Just the right thing to do, so.
It is. I promise you it is. The people of our community, like Commissioner Dorsey said, that splits mine and his district down there, Highway 77. I'm on one side, he's on the other. So, we both get these calls, and it's never pretty down there. It's just something needs to be done. And Mr. Powell mentioned to me that maybe a roundabout, but I think four-way stop would be fine there. Because a roundabout would require requisition of property. I would give them my corner, whatever they needed, you know. But those others, they really can't. They don't have a whole lot there to give, so. But anyway, if we can get this ball rolling, I'm all for it, and I'll give you a second on your motion.
Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any other discussion or questions? Yes, ma'am. If you would, if you would, if you'd come to the front.
Come on.
Center work, Danny.
Come on up here. I know you're not shy.
Center workers. Now, with those, they always have a speed breaker, like the four-way stops, and before you get to them, since it's something new.
Rumble strips.
Rumble strips.
Uh, yeah, that's what you know what I'm talking about, yes.
They'll put notices prior, whatever, 500 feet, 1,000 feet.
Yes.
Be very well recognized.
You'll have rumble strips on each road coming into the intersection.
Got you, good, good.
You'll have the flashing stop signs with the LED lights and the solar panel.
Yeah, like we have on Bowman, I think that's Bowman Highway.
It'd be similar to what you got at Clay Brown Bio Church Road 172.
Got you, got you. Just want to make sure that-
But probably more marked because of the limited site distance going toward Elberton.
Yes, yes, yes.
Trucks parked in front of that store there, so it's a big problem. Then when people coming off of Bio, they can't see, they can't see.
Yeah, because I hate going that way.
And the driveway of the store is a problem.
Yeah, it's a problem, and they're not going to do anything about that. I've had quite a few discussions with DOT about it. They said the store needed to take liability and this, that, and the other, so.
And then you got the dollar store on the other side, right, that-
Well, what do I have to do there? Turn Coldwater Creek onto Cokesbury Highway to come out to that stop sign.
Got you, got you, got you. Also a question about the prayer this, this Sunday. I think it's 5 o'clock, correct, on the square?
She told me 11:30.
11:30, okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or discussions? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's a four-o vote. All right, now we'll move on to public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to bring anything to the Board of Commissioners as far as county business, we'll be happy to listen to you. We do not want any remarks made to any individual commissioner. With that being said, Ms. Evans, and we will have a five-minute clock.
Squeeze it in there.
Y'all can't talk to me, though.
No.
No, I'm kidding.
We're just going to sit here, and you got your five minutes.
Okay, so I am Nancy Evans, and I've been before y'all many times. I live on a gravel road. And every time I've come, I've said, can we get our gravel road paved because the dust is killing us? And every time y'all tell me, there's no money. And guess what? I opened the paper two weeks ago and see $7 million plus for roads. So, once again, I'm here to say, can I get our roads paved? I'm here on behalf of my neighborhood. So, I'm just wondering, what's your plan of attack on what are you going to do with that money? Well, actually, let me back up. The paper had, I was confused when I read it. It said there was $7.7 million found for roads. And then, I think it quoted Mr. Dorsey that said there's another, another $3.6 million out of the previous SLOST. Is that right? So, is it 11 million or is it 7.7 million?
That's why I made a comment at the end of the meeting, said these numbers may not be accurate at this time. We've got to figure that out.
Okay, what, so whether, neither here nor there, it's still a significant amount of money. What's your plan? How are y'all going to figure out what to do with it?
He threw you five minutes.
Nope. But I'm questioning first.
Go ahead and throw you five minutes.
Okay, so, all right, I'm going to go on to T-SLOST, and then we can talk about the other.
Okay.
T-SLOST, I want to talk, tell the people of the county, because a lot of people, I'm not sure they know what T-SLOST is. And I also am not sure, anyway, T-SLOST, just in case anybody from the county doesn't know, it is a extra 1% sales tax that goes for nothing but transportation projects, roads improvements, that kind of thing. For the last 10 years, the county has not spent money on roads except for what they get from a grant from Georgia that they match 30% on. It is about $1 million a year total. And out of that $1 million, they only get to pave about five to seven miles because of how expensive things are. So, there's 550 miles of roads in the county, and if you take five to seven miles every year, it's 100 years before the roads all get paved. There is a life expectancy of roads, every single road. And consider this kind of like your home that you live in. If there's a roof leak, you patch it. If there's another roof leak, suppose you don't patch it. Eventually, you can patch and patch and patch, but the roof is eventually going to fail, and then your house is going to rot away. That's what's happening to our roads. We don't want an extra 1% sales tax, but we need it. And there are 159 counties in Georgia and 111 have 8% tax or more. So, it's coming, whether we like it or not. I think we need it. That's my plug for T-SLOST. Whether it happens this year, whether it happens next, I think it needs to happen. So, now, back to this 7 million maybe that we have, what's the plan?
At this point, we do not have a plan for that money.
Okay.
As far as already having it designated dollar per project, we do not have that. But we will continue to use the money as we have in the past, such as making a road list and going out and checking the roads and taking the worst roads and paving.
Okay, well, and there was a, there was a study done by the county between 2008 and 2014. And at the end of 2014, they had improved a lot of roads. At the end of that six-year process, there was still over 33% of the roads that were not in good shape. And that equates to about 180 miles of roads. So, is that a place to start? Is divvying it up equally between unpaved roads, paved roads, bad, good, indifferent? Does the public get an input?
So, let me answer some of your questions.
Okay.
If you don't mind, Ms. Chair.
Go ahead.
So, SLOST 5 was set at $16 million. That was the cap. So, municipalities wanted their money upfront. I'll accept City of Hartwell. City of Hartwell was a qualifying municipality, so they got their money every month. So, the county took a risk that if $16 million didn't materialize, and the municipalities, Bowman, I mean, Bowersville, Cannon, and Royston, they got their part up front. If it didn't materialize, the county lost out that money. The county would have been short. So, Mr. Gordon, our county attorney at the time, decided, let's put a clause in SLOST 5 that anything collected, because the tax would have terminated once it hit $16 million, unless there was an agreement in the clause. There's a clause there that said anything over $16 million goes toward county roads, period. It's earmarked for that, and that's where it goes. So, we hit the $16 million mark over two years ago. And if you go back and you look at our audit, you can figure this out. And our audit starts October 1, 2022, through September 30, 2023. That's our last fiscal year audit, which we got at the end of March 1st of April. In that time period, there was $5,635,682 that was collected. Okay, that ended September 30th. The tax was collected, SLOST 5, through the end of March. So, you got six more months of roughly two, about $4,000, $400,000 a month. So, that's 2.4 million, plus the 5.6 is around seven, right at 8 million if you do the math. Now, we buy gravel. You said we didn't spend anything on roads. We buy gravel. We buy, we bought trucks. We bought equipment. All that stuff comes out of SLOST because it's capital. So, we spent money on roads, but that, that has come down. There's also been other things that has gone on, and this money's been spent. But there's no more of this money coming in. It's done. It's truncated. It's over and out. Now, that's how that money came about. And we did not know what the number was until we got to audit and started looking. That's how we were able to figure this out. So, if you look at the math, that's how it accumulated. And none of us knew at the time what this was accumulating at the, I mean, I knew it, but I didn't think about it, just to be totally transparent, because I remember when it was done. So, that's how that money's come about. Last year, we didn't have, the last time we paved, we knew there was going to be that bridge on Royston Highway. So, Vaner Road was one of the roads that was on there. Current Church Road was another road we were looking at paving. We cut that back and did not spend more than the AL-MIG allotment because we felt like we would have problems with roads being destroyed. And we did have roads that got destroyed because of that bridge. So, that's how all this has come about. And there's plenty of roads out there that need to be resurfaced right now, and that's what we're going to have to do. And you're looking at cost-wise, and Terrell, correct me if I'm wrong, roughly $130,000 a mile to resurface. If you have to mill, it could be as much as $180,000 to mill out the soft spots and things like that. Well, we'll put this out for bid, and I really feel like you're going to see probably somewhere around 20, 30 miles be put out for resurfacing this year.
That's what I would expect too, because if you take 7 million roughly and divide it by 130,000, it ends up being like 70 miles. But that's best-case scenario where you don't have to do any kind of fixing of the edges or the-
You got to do all that.
Digging it up.
You got to do all that.
Yes, you do.
You're going to have to go back and do shoulders and-
Those roads are few and far between, and that's kind of my point.
Every road you resurface, you're going to have to do shoulders. You're going to do driveway. You're going to have to probably mill some soft places out, because if these roads were in decent shape and didn't have a failing base where we had to go in and mill this stuff out, why would we be resurfacing them?
Well, and that's kind of my point, is that 7 million sounds like a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money at all. And, and there's, it just needs to have some attention paid to it, so.
On the new pays, Terrell, what does it cost a mile like, like, so like you pave a new road? Like it's not one that we resurfacing, like a new road? I know it's like 130, 130,000 a mile, but how much is it probably run, take on and do a half a mile or mile? Right, a new road, unpaid road.
Three to $400,000 a mile.
Okay, so I got a quote, I got a quote from a paving contractor in Athens that works with municipalities. And our road, because it has a good base, because it has a good crown, because it's got the good ditches, it can be done, we have .589 miles. And it can be done for putting two coats, because he said two coats would be enough without, because there's not, there is a little bit of heavy traffic, a little bit of trash trucks and this and that. But for the most part, it's not like a lot of really heavy equipment. So he felt like two coats would be enough. And the quote was probably a couple hundred thousand. So.
For six tenths of a mile.
For six tenths of a mile. And if you take 130,000 for one coat, times a mile, and then you do the math, that it actually comes out less than 100,000.
A local contractor gave me that number that I told you a while ago. And I mean, this, this is somebody who does a lot of paving around here. It's not going to be just as simple as going and paving. There's going to have to be grading. There's going to have to be right-of-way acquired. Because when we start doing dirt roads, which I think there's probably some money from T-Sploßed put in there, you don't have to start with your oldest roads and your 60-foot right-of-way roads.
Can we at least, well, two of our roads are 60-foot right-of-way. So can we at least get a quote, a legitimate quote?
Those are not the oldest roads on that. See, I'm not wrong.
Get a quote, that's illegal.
I just made a phone call.
You can get all you want to. I cannot call and get a quote. That's illegal.
Well, how do y'all get quotes on what goes on LMIG? How do you?
I put it out for being.
You're bidding it out. Oh, okay.
It's a budget, not more. Through the southeast United States, not the part yet.
Okay, okay.
Well, another thing, too, to be fair, with our road department, our road department's done a fantastic job on these dirt roads. How much base is going to be, have to put down? I think that's a discussion for them and for Shannon and his crew. I think they's, huh?
DOT specs 6 inches.
But as much gravel as they put on that road, it may be at 6 inches.
But we went over this years ago, so I'm not going to get back into that. But I went to the LMIG director and he said he would give a waiver because it was such a rural road that it didn't matter that it wasn't to DOT specs. If the county thought it was good, then that's all that mattered. If you went to LMIG and you said, all we're going to do is put two inches of tar and go from there, he would give you the waiver.
I don't think we can do anything without Ben meeting specs, can we?
On LMIG, you can, because I got his verbal approval.
If you do one, you gotta do the whole county. That's the whole purpose.
Okay, so, so how about, how about you put me on the LMIG? Okay, okay.
When we talk about LMIG, we turn in that paperwork to LMIG to hold the money. Correct?
Yep.
State law requires us to bid out by specs when we bid out the job. That doesn't do LMIG. That's what's whoever do LMIG. Okay?
Then why would he tell me this? Can y'all call him? I'll be glad to look up his number and give it to you.
I've talked to him three times as much as you do, man. Every year. Not in many cars, man.
That's okay.
I'm overselling.
It's okay.
But, but yeah, I do talk to him. And yeah, that's to secure the money. Yeah, people give waivers, secure the money towards the agents running the place. But state regulations, when we actually send out the bid, have to be specified. It's not the LMIG. If we spend on roads, we, LMIG, we give them money.
Then, then how did y'all pave 60 miles of road 10 years ago? Y'all, yeah, because it went from over 100?
They borrowed gravel. It wasn't even LMIG money.
Okay, so can we not tar and gravel?
It was, it was a lot cheaper back then than it is now.
Can we do something? Here I am again. You've got money. Help us.
All right, let's, you've made your point. You have five minutes. We get five minutes.
I know, I know.
So there may be others here that want to speak, so. All right, Ms. Evans. Ms., Mr. Thompson.
Something wrong with your boat?
Huh? Needs paving.
No. I beat Frankie up enough about Sardis Point. So I know, so I know y'all know about it, and hopefully it'll.
I ask you, was something wrong with your boat?
My boat? Yeah, I broke a prop. I got one older than that. But anyway, Sardis Point, you know, you know about it. It's a third of a mile, and it's in bad shape. But what I was going to talk to you about was that, but also T-Sploß. I encourage you to go ahead and go through with the T-Sploß as soon as you can because the $7 million that you're, that you got to do roads, it's not going to last long. I mean, you can probably go through that pretty quick. And the T-Sploß could just be right on the end of that, and you could just move on with it. And so I encourage you to consider going forward with T-Sploß as soon as we can. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You keeping grass cut on your asphalt road, then?
Anyone else?
I was wondering, I mean, you said, I thought you had something you wanted to say. Ms. Brown.
Do I have to go up here?
Yeah.
Well, I've already talked to most of y'all before, but.
What was your name?
Helene Brown. I think we're known, as you know, for the shortest gravel road in the county. We don't take great pride in that because it's gravel and it's not paved. So I'm just here to ask a question. Follow-up is, we were told many years ago that this would happen. We were able to get some gravel at one point. Nobody does anything on our road.
Ms. Brown, I put gravel on it. Every time you call me, I've done work orders.
And you're absolutely right. And I haven't called you in about two and a half years, and nothing has happened. And I didn't feel like it was my position to always have to call and ask. And I think at this point, we're at the point where we just don't understand. So I'm not here for anything except answers. So I'm just asking a question. We have a short little road. We have people there that, you know, we have, we just need it. We have handicap issues. We have all kinds of issues there, as you know. We've talked many times, Frankie, about it. And so I don't know what else to say. I'm just here to say the same thing other people are saying. So if you have an answer, I mean, our road is, you know our road.
I know.
It's right off Teasley Road.
What's the name of the road?
Farmers Lane.
Well, our, yeah, and Farmer's Lane. And we are a maintained road, supposed to be.
How long has it been a county road?
Oh, long time, you know.
I don't know that, ma'am.
Yeah, at least.
It's Farmer's Lane. It's right off the.
Is that the run, it runs back?
Heritage Road.
Through the woods up there?
Heritage Road.
Tree line, back behind Dean Teasley's old house?
That's right. It's off that main road, Heritage Road. It's right off to the right, I believe.
Frankie knows it very well, because you can't.
It probably costs more to maintain gravel than it would be to pave it.
Well, one thing, I just want to make sure everybody understands, there's a lot of county roads out there that are dirt. There have been county roads a whole lot longer, and people want to see that, too. And that's their argument. You know, our road's been a county road for X number of years, 50, 60 years. And when's it going to be done? I mean, that's something I hear quite frequently.
Okay. So you agree with me, then? Something needs to be done?
I'm, no, I'm not agreeing with you right now. No.
Okay.
I'm just saying that there's a lot of people out there who have lived on dirt roads a whole lot longer, that I think we need to take the oldest dirt roads and we work our way forward. Whenever we get to that point, and the only way that's going to really happen is if T-Sploß is passed.
So what you're saying, if T-Sploß is passed, then there's going to be, depending on 100 years ago or whatever, we're going to go in that order?
I think there'll be some money put in there and allocated for first-time paving. That's what we call paving dirt roads.
Okay, and that was my question. So we are looking at putting some of that money toward first-time paving for those of us?
I feel sure there will be.
Okay.
It was discussed.
But, I mean, that doesn't mean that your road's going to be resurfaced. I just want to make sure you understand that. I mean, there's a lot of dirt roads out there that still, that are still dirt roads.
You know, like in my, like in my district, like Farmer's Lane, you got Bachelor Lane, you got Lower Lane, Carte Johnson, Rising Road, Aten Airs Road. And some of them roads have been dirt roads a long time.
You start with the oldest one and work your way forward. That's all we need.
I don't know. But I feel for Ms. Brown and them. I mean, I feel traveled down there on that road.
And he's driven down that, he knows exactly what we're talking about. So anyway, I appreciate your time, but anything you can do to look into it, I know will be appreciated by many people in the county.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank y'all.
All right, anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'll be quick. But no, good evening, Commissioners. It's nice to see you all again. As a reminder, my name's Evan Halloran. I'm a Development Manager with AES. We're an American energy company with decades of experience operating electricity generation facilities from natural gas plants, coal plants, to hydro and solar. I'm thankful for the opportunity to have provided some feedback on your proposed solar ordinance at the last meeting, and appreciate being able to speak briefly here tonight. As you know, AES is in the very early stages of looking into developing a solar project here in Hart County. And I remember Chairman Sarah, when we spoke several months back on the plans for the ordinance, you mentioned the county wants to make sure that solar development doesn't get out of control, which I think is something we can all agree is, is really important. You know, any type of development is a change. It has pros and cons that need to be carefully considered. So we completely understand this is a process that is really important for the county to go through. Hart County also has a proven track record of producing quality economic development projects while maintaining their rural character. And we believe that strategically cited solar projects that are developed with significant community input can be net positives for a community. I think, you know, what the county's doing with looking into that best practices document is, is a great idea as you work to refine this ordinance and really get to the root of, of some of the concerns with solar development. You know, we understand a solar project probably isn't the first thing most folks think of when it comes to economic development opportunities. But it is important for us to, you know, point out that our project would generate $15 million in new property tax revenues over its lifetime. For the first few years of operations, it would generate over $1 million per year in new property tax revenue.
What's defined lifetime?
30 years.
30 years?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And if you want to point of comparison, the land in its current use now generates approximately $12,000 per year in property tax revenues.
You said lifetime's 30 years, but you initially said $1 million per year. If you break that up now.
In the first few years.
Yeah, you're half a million a year average.
Right. It depreciates over time. So those, I think it's the first four years roughly are over a million, and then starts to kind of go down.
You're saying $12,000. What size tract are you talking about?
So it's multiple parcels, total, it's just, just over 1,000 acres, roughly.
I disagree with those numbers. I strongly disagree with those numbers.
I could very well be wrong.
You know what land's selling for in Hart County?
It, I know that it's, it's going up.
So about 10,000 acre.
That's an average. You go higher, it's smaller tract.
1,000 acres, you can do the math. Take 40%, it's a lot more than $12,000. It's not even close.
I certainly won't, won't argue with that. I'd use the property tax estimator on the website. Very well could have been the wrong approach. That said, you know, the project obviously would add diversity to the existing strong economic development base and would also provide local landowners with the opportunity to have financial stability for their families. And importantly, our project wouldn't be cited on any cultivated crop land. And I know, you know, what we've heard, important to preserve agricultural, high-quality land for the future. So we would just respectfully request that the county consider the opportunity to work cooperatively as you continue to go through this ordinance to identify and resolve some of the concerns, particularly in regards to the minimum lot size and the setbacks that we discussed in the last meeting, to allow for the development of quality solar projects and their reasonable regulation. You know, things like the location of substations. We have resources that we're happy to provide you all with to help as you kind of work through that. But again, just want to sincerely thank you all for your time and hard work on the ordinance. I know that you're balancing a lot and just appreciate the opportunity to speak. If there are additional questions, certainly happy to answer them. If not, happy to let you all get on with the rest of the meeting.
I got one question. Have you saw, I saw this just looking, I've done quite a bit of research on your stuff. Where you're doing your solar farms over the top of parking lots. It's pretty big.
Those are large. So.
So that may be something y'all need to look at. I mean, you know, private parking solar farms over parking lots. They look pretty cool. I mean, the cars are in the shade, everybody's happy.
They do. No, those are a great opportunity to do solar in those areas, provide shade, like you said. Typically, for a utility-scale solar project, you're looking at somewhere on the order of magnitude of a couple of hundred acres to then ultimately sell power to the utility companies. They're kind of just looking for that scale. But to your point, solar projects on top of parking lots are also a great kind of dual use of that, of that land.
Yes, I would be very resourceful, I thought.
All right, thank you all for the time.
Thank you.
So $10,000 an acre, 1,000 acres in our mileage rate, 15.442, which is total EMS, school MNO, and county MNO would generate about $62,000 a year, just the land.
Unless it's in conservation.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yes, sir.
But it wouldn't be able to be in conservation if it's solar.
That's right.
Love it, Kevin. I'm going to go to Michael's questions earlier on about location of substations. These utility-scale solar plants build their own substations, and then they feed it into the other ones. So they don't have to be right near the EMC substation. So they'll build their own to be able to provide all this. This, these are big utility scales, and they have to control them that way.
But don't they have to hook up somewhere?
They tie it back into the actual power.
Right. That's what we was talking about.
But building the substation, they build their own substation. They do the conversions into the DC and the AC, and they feed it directly into the power lines. They don't have to really run through one of the EMC's substation.
The gentleman explaining that is in their 100 to 200-acre farms, but they actually focus on 50 to 100-acre farms.
Well, the smaller ones would have to do this, but the utility scales are generally bigger, bigger.
Yeah, I got the gist of all that. He was, so you was here last meeting as well. And he explained a lot of stuff.
Yeah. And the, and the other thing about DNR and the APD, that's for erosion control on that. That's the guy that's for erosion control. They're trying to minimize how much they open up at one time and everything else, because problem you have is always erosion control with these farmers.
Of course.
All right.
Thank you.
That's certain.
All right, anyone else? If not, can we get a motion to exit into executive session?
I'm like a motion to exit into executive session for litigation.
Second. We got a motion back from Mr. Dorsey, second back from Mr. Teasley. We'll call for a vote. All in favor, this 4-0 vote. We thank you for being here tonight.